Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Hudsonville City Commission dated April 9th, 2024. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bullheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
Debray?
Here.
Groot?
Here.
Camp?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. Now is the time for a moment of silence. Usually I ask the members of the commission if they have any recommendations for a moment of silence. But I'm going to seize the moment for a change. You all have to humor me a little bit. I had worked with a friend at one of my other jobs and he lost a good friend this weekend to suicide. And you may know this, but I also serve in a nonprofit in Holland. A good friend of mine, whose son was a star athlete in Michigan State, committed suicide four years ago. We know that veterans are very vulnerable, 55 percent. Higher rate of suicide, 21 take their lives every day. Which is deeply personal to me since I work with these veterans. Young athletes are very vulnerable. People with disabilities and people that are marginalized. And the one that really, I think we need to be considerate right now is the LGBTQ community are extremely vulnerable to suicide. And I think sometimes in the culture right now, we forget that. And I'm very, very disturbed by what's happened, particularly in the county where they turned away a grant for mental health because there was a clause in there that sought to reach out to the LGBT community for mental health and prevent suicide. And I just can't help but think, we've all been touched. We've all been hurt. And I don't know if we do enough to love those people that are considering and those families that suffer. So if we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Now is the time for public comments. I know we have at least one, my friend Brad Slaw, who's our state House representative and who's on the ballot for the primary in August 7th. We're both on that ballot, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for allowing me to be up and speaking to you for just a minute. Just give you a couple of quick hitters out of the Lansing community. One is it's budget season, as you probably all well know. And budget season tends to be interesting, if nothing else. And last year, there was an extra $9 billion for the state of federal funds that we had that we could use and utilize in the budget. And so all of those got used, along with our normal budgeting numbers. Now, to be able to keep that same level of spending, we have to increase the revenue source. And there's several things that are going to happen. One is your income tax rate is going to go up from 24 to 25, so that you're going to see that in 20, from 2024 to 2025, sorry, just want to make sure I clear that. You're going to see that obviously in your income tax. So you're going to pay more taxes. And you're going to see that, one of the proposals to fill that gap that's out there that the governor has created with the budget that she gave us is an increase in tipping fees at the landfill. So every landfill that we have in the state of Michigan, there's a proposal to increase the tipping fees from 39 cents per ton today to $5 a ton in the budget. That will create like a thousand percent increase, just in case you're looking at it math. Scary, from my perspective. Think about every business, every construct, think about home construction, what the cost is going to be because home construction, just think about the waste that goes out in lumber and all those kind of things that are already turned into landfills. So anyway, so you can expect to see some of that to happen, or at least it's on the budget until the legislature takes, goes through. I'm continuing office hours where I meet in each of the communities. April 26th, I'll be at Signature's Restaurant at 8:30 in the morning. Or I'll be in Genesin at the Big Apple Bakery, or whatever it is, Big Apple on Baldwin, at 10 o'clock. And then the House passed House Bill 4012, which was a speed limit bill. And that bill has now become law. The governor signed it last week and maybe the first of this week. And it is now Public Act 33, and it should give local districts more impact in setting speed limits. So that's really a large part of what that bill does. And I was thankful that the folks in the Senate and in the governor's chair felt like it was worthy to sign. Obviously, it's something that I had sponsored. And then the special election is going to happen for the two open House seats on the 16th. So next week, Tuesday, we'll know whether we've got 56-54 like we had of Democrats, Republicans, or are we going to have some other mixture of that. So it'll be interesting. Stay tuned because that will change what kind of legislation moves and how fast. Thank you.
So Brad, Signature's April 26th at 8:30 a.m., is that what you said?
Signature's Restaurant?
Yeah.
8:30 a.m. on the 26th.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Brad. Any other public comments that's not on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. There are six. Minutes of the City Commission Special Session dated March 12th, City Commission Regular Session dated March 12th, Minutes of the City Commission Work Session dated March 26th, Minutes of the Board of Review, Opening Taxpayer Appeal Session March 5th, 11th, and 12th, Minutes of the Terrace Square Advisory Board, and Minutes of the Planning Commission Regular Meeting dated March 20th. I would note, there's a couple of things there I'd like to call attention to on those minutes. The number four there, the Van Buren-Wilson Pleasant was the street redesign, which I think everybody here knows that Dan and I feel pretty passionate about. It was something we discussed at length, and that's something we're going to have to, over the next year, Dan, I think we're really going to need to really look at that because it's getting worse. The other item there was, I wanted to call out on the Planning Commission, there will be two public hearings on the properties that are being developed. The Moxie property and the Van Klaassen property that have been churning for quite a while, and I think we'll all be happy to see that those public comments happen and we can move forward, Mr. City Manager, because it's been a long road and there's been a lot of more motion in this one. So I think we'll be very glad to see that maybe come to some kind of closure for all of us. Also, there was a personnel committee meeting on the 26th of March. Do we have minutes on those prepared?
That wasn't a formal meeting. We do have notes from that meeting taken, but I think they were completed prior to the...
Do we normally put those in the consent agenda items? We don't? Okay, I thought we did. Huh?
It's my first time.
The only other thing is in item four there, the City Commission Work Session, where we talked about the organizational chart updates, do we need to bring the org chart counselor to the commission for a vote to make sure it's in compliance with the charter?
Yep, so no vote has been taken yet, so that if you decide to do anything with that, it will have to be done at an open meeting. Yep.
So that should be done at the May meeting, then?
Sure, yep.
Are there any other changes or discussion on any of those consent agenda items? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Consent agenda items carry. Moving on to public safety, fire department. Steve is not here. It's you, Jason.
I'm the lucky one. Steve is at the Mount Pleasant getting paid for his inspector's license. He has some continuing education up there. So in March was a busy month. We had 54 calls of service in March. Eighty percent of those were EMS related. We are off 30 calls year-to-date from last year, so it's been a very busy first quarter for us. Calls of note, this month, we did have an auto aid with Georgetown Township via fire up on the highway. We also had two trainings this month. Both of those will fulfill the state requirements for continuing head that we need to have as firefighters. They now continue head on just firefighting now, EMS as well. As you can see from the note, Steve attended several meetings this past month. Wanted to make note of the state-funded residential fire alarm and installation program that we are starting. Steve's been doing a really good job of that. I think it's a really great outreach program for the city. Gets people with smoke detectors covered by incendiary detectors at no cost to them. So Steve's been doing a really good job of that. Any questions at all?
Commissioners? Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Sheriff's Report.
Good evening. I'll first start out with the elephant in the room that have a beard. It's Pauline. We're in a fundraiser, our department for Place Unity Tour, which is for the fallen officers throughout the country. So I had to pay 50 bucks and I have a beard for the first time in my life, so. Month of March, we had 199 calls. Guys were busy with traffic, 142 traffic stops, so they're doing their work. I started a new thing with DPW. We have equipment to get traffic numbers. We don't utilize it as much because of the grid, I think the grid has natural costs and we're going to do certain work here. But we figured since we have the equipment, let's use it a little bit more. So we have started getting some traffic counts on our side roads. I thought it would be good to at least get a baseline of how many cars are going down our side roads. We've kind of compared this as things get busier. So we've done Berry Street, which I was really surprised by the number. I don't know if you read that, but the eastbound traffic for 24-hour period was 121 cars. And westbound was 597 cars. Central Road, right from the City Hall, we added as well. 1,032 cars go past City Hall in a day. So the next ones we're going to do is Allen. We're also going to do 30 Second kind by Vanderland Home Improvement to see how many cars go by there and what cities they're going to be at in 24-hour period. We did 36 at Golf Side, but I did not make it in time to get it on this report. There was 1,600 cars that went on 36 by Golf Side every day. So it's a very busy road and I think it's going up. But at least now we have a baseline of year-to-year of how many cars are going down those roads. So also for March, all of the guys went through a 12-hour in-service again. We tried to take advantage of the colder weather, less vacation time. So everybody's been certified in TASER, CPR First Aid, Jiu-Jitsu, my favorite, and all that kind of stuff. So it was a busy month and I guess I think you're all going well. Any questions at all? Yes?
Maybe I misheard you, but did it sound like you said there was five times the traffic westbound Berry than there is eastbound Berry?
That's what the numbers came back with, 121 and 597.
That's crazy.
That's crazy.
No idea why?
No. I think a lot of the kids in the morning take Berry into school because of the light. Because traffic is pretty full in the morning hours. I feel like they're taking that to utilize the light. But on the way home, it's wherever they want to go kind of thing, so. So we'll see what the, really intrigued to see what the numbers are going to be for Berry, I mean for Allen. I don't think Allen is utilized as much as it used to be, except for when school is getting out. So we'll see how much trend gets there and I'll report that in the next one.
So on those counts, is that that rubber?
Yeah.
And DPW puts that out and they have a counter?
Yep, their software to download it.
How long, how often?
24-hour period.
We put it out for 24 hours?
24 hours.
When do we see the street speedometer sign?
So he is doing the street count on 30 Second at, near Vanderlands this week. He may have done already, I just didn't talk to him this week. So once that is done, then we can put the poles up and the signs up. The intention is to put the speed signs more in front of the high school and from the four-lane area where speed is faster, so we can make an impact in that area as well.
Yeah, because I get routinely passed there by cars doing 50, easy.
Yeah, I worked 60 hours this last week covering all the guys. We're in spring break and I spent a lot of time in that section of 30 Second. It's a lot of traffic.
It's a raceway, yeah.
Yeah. So we're going to try and utilize them at that location this year and see how that goes and see what kind of speeds we get.
Good job. Any other questions for the sergeant? Thanks, Joe. Your siren was very loud on Friday. I'm not complaining, it's just observation.
Yeah, we are well-covered with tornado sirens here in Hudsonville. We have four within the city limits. Easily any place in the city, you can hear two of them. A lot of places in the city, you can hear three of them. So we plan to make sure people are informed. Month of March, not a huge month for us, but a couple of key things. You noticed that in my, under my department staff meeting, we did have a resignation. Leslie resigned. She got promotion at work and had some other things changed. She lives out in Holland. And she said she just didn't feel like she could commit to our department, but she asked me to please not lose her home to work. She would like to, if things so, then we can come back and she'll be welcome back. She'll be missed because she came to us with emergency management experience from the Air Force and so kind of set that she had to set up, set away, but hopefully she will be back. So it does leave us with one opening right now that we are working on filling. I know we have at least one application that is going to be forwarded to me. And also, I know a person personally that I'm going to start putting the hearts out on him, so he'll apply as well. Skywarn training. Just want to clarify what Skywarn is and what isn't. Skywarn is not storm chasing. What it is, is being trained to be able to read the clouds and to somebody who reads weather radar and, you know, know, hey, this is something I need to call in and we call it into the Weather Service. So it's the ability to spot a rotating cloud, not just a full cloud, but a part of the cloud that's rotating and something that could turn into a tornado. And the reason this is important is the National Weather Service has a weather radar at the airport, at Gerald Airborne Airport. But to avoid ground clutter on the radar, the lowest beam is about half a degree inclined, which means by the time it's out here, and I overstated it the other day, it's not 5,000 feet in the air, I think it's like 3,000 feet in the air. But still, all the severe weather happens below that, so they don't see it as much on the radar. So they need trained spotters out here to actually call in and say, this is what we're seeing. And it also helps them corroborate some of the things that they might be seeing on radar if they were to put that together with actual field observations. And requirement for my team is to go through that training at least every other year, so we are always prepared for that.
Is that training open to the public also, or is it just?
Yes. There were 300 or 400 people in high school for that training. It's open to the public. A lot of people are amateur radio operators because a lot of times that's how they'll call in the sightings, but it's not a requirement either. It can be anybody. I believe my wife has been trained in the past in storm spotting.
Can you just put out a notice next time?
Sure. Yeah, that's a great idea. I apologize for not doing that, but yeah, I'd love to get you all in there.
Or put it in the newsletter.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that suggestion. I often don't think of those sort of things.
And this was, the last week was the anniversary of the 1956 tornado.
April 3rd, yes. So, and for the Skywarn training, in two years, it'll be back in Hudsonville again because we alternate with Kent County. And we're already talking about having it here in Hudsonville, not someplace else in Ottawa County, and tying it in with a 70-year commemoration of the tornado. Any other questions?
Thanks, Dave.
All right.
Moving on to City Treasury Report. Andrew?
Good evening. We're three-quarters of the way through this fiscal year and we're at 75.4% of our expenses, so still right on track with that budget. Don't have much this month beyond that. Besides, the interest that we received this month was just shy of $55,000, so that's nice. We're averaging about $40,000 a month since I've taken over here. And before, it was about $20,000 a month, so we're, I know we like grants and everything, but that's the grant the finance department can get for you. So that's that. And then, any questions from anyone?
Just, I just have a couple. First of all?
Yes.
I appreciate the grant spreadsheet. It would be, if we could just put a total at the bottom, I don't know if we want to do a rolling for years or something. Kind of neat if we could just see the gross amount there that we have been awarded and hopefully we can maybe achieve.
Okay.
And I know we're going to get, not every grant, we're not going to win everyone, but the fact that we're out there applying is huge. So you know how, I'm all about free money. I think we all are, so it goes a long ways to extend our abilities to service our community. I just, I just want to go through this a little bit more in detail. If we, there's, on the one page that lists our bonds, there are four that we have. The first one there is on the DPW building. We still owe 60?
Oh, on the debt spreadsheet, yes.
$60,000. On the G O L T capital improvement bond, which is the Terrace Square and the Hurry Street.
Yep.
We still owe 3.6 with our, with interest, it's 4.8 million.
That's correct.
With the prospect installment loan, which we anticipate will be cleared with the sale with to Van Klaassen.
The bond expires June 15th.
Yes.
We're slated to close for the purchase agreement on June 14th.
Okay. Do I need to be there?
I'll have an update for that.
Okay, okay. And then the last one is the Plaza installment loan. That's the purchase of the downtown properties. We made one payment already of 312 or 316, and there'll be two more, one every, every year, right? Is that, how are we doing that?
I think it's a three-year structured deal.
So we?
Yes, so we made our first payment upon closing and we have two more payments to go.
And when those payments, when are they made?
January 15th.
So?
Of '25 and '26.
'26, okay. Any questions on that from the commissioners? The other thing I just wanted to take a look at, so if you look at that, we, real big picture, we owe, we're bonded out for 6.9 million.
Yes, sir.
Our investment reports, which we're getting about 5% for, which is great, we hold about 8.2 million. Is that correct?
In investments?
Yeah.
Total, yeah, in investments, total cash is about 11.2.
11, because you, yeah.
Because we have some in West Michigan, yes.
The actual investment is that.
Investments is just over 8 million, yes.
I think that's, that's pretty good, gentlemen. I think we've done a very good job and it reflects on all of us for our fiscal responsibility. Any questions for Andrew? Thank you. Moving on to the next item, which is payment of the bills. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $318,372.28 and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any questions on the payment of the bills? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, moving on to ACH funds distribution. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the funds distributed via automated clearinghouse in the amount of $123,250.11, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the City Manager.
Support. It's been moved and supported. There was some discussion I saw on email last week concerning a impropriety with some ACH funds distribution, not at our end, but at the other end. Was that?
It was with regards to the chamber.
It was with regards to the chamber. Now, is that something we're going to have to bear the loss on? It's a chamber? How's that going to work out?
The City and the Chamber's finances are kept separately, so right now it'd be a loss to the chamber. I've met with the President of West Michigan Community Bank, along with Director Hicks. We're trying to untie the stone and figure out what we can do to recoup that money. We're still in the process right now, but right now, I don't think we're that optimistic, unfortunately.
How much?
Total $38,000.
So the commission, the chamber's going to have to eat that?
They would unless we can figure something else out. We're working with two insurance entities right now to see what we can recoup. It was a very weird situation. Lindsay didn't do anything wrong?
No, I'm not saying anything wrong. That's what I'm saying. I just want to make sure we understand it. As a commission, we duty-bound understand, that's all.
Yeah, so we're working to try to figure it out. The scammers are getting better at their game. And with that, we're investing money in a security, but even then, it's somewhat impressive what they're able to do.
Who here hasn't been hacked on their credit cards? Anybody who hasn't been hacked? I want to meet this person. You've never been hacked?
I haven't either.
Wow. Clean living, okay. Thank you for that update. Is there, the motions on the table? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, moving on to item 12, Budget Adjustments. Did you want to speak to that? I read through that. It wasn't really anything that we have, we don't already, I think, know, but?
There's nothing too significant. Though, I mean, the big thing was the 1.15 million for the Jipin Plaza.
For the Jipin property, which we?
Which was already approved.
Which we talked about at length, unless you have anything to add to that, I don't know.
So?
No, that was it. You know, and I credit City Staff and Andrew. This is not very many or in-depth budget amendments, which means we did a pretty good job.
Did a great job, yep. Any questions?
I'll just have one more probably for you in June, just to clean up the rest of the budget for the end of the year, but this should take care of most things.
Any questions for Andrew or Tyler on the budget adjustments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
We don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the 2023, 2024 Budget Adjustments Number 7 through 13 as drafted.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, now moving on to, I think, the industrial facilities certificate exemption certificate amendment. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-1787 amending the industrial facilities exemption certificate number 2018-082 for an additional six years for Cedar Crest Dairy, Inc.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. I see a man is ready to talk to us from Lakeshore Vantage. Go ahead. And Rob Becker, our favorite ice cream guy?
Yeah, me and Mary, I'm with Lakeshore Vantage. Always appreciate the City Hudsonville's support, especially Tyler and Jill. Of course, Mayor, your support in all of our work. So it's pretty standard. Historically, the City Hudsonville has only approved tax abatements for the six years out of the 12 years allowed by law. Cedar Crest Dairy is asking for the approval of the second six years allowed, which is pretty standard. So with that, I'm happy to give more detail or answer any questions?
I think the question I had, and we talked about this previously, this is a six years on top of six years. And you indicated to me that we're seeing typically 12 years being awarded upfront.
Yeah, yeah. So I would say, so I've been with Lakeshore Vantage eight years and most communities, or I would say all community, other communities I work with approve the full 12 years. And then if there are additional documents included in the application that goes to the State Tax Commission, like a P118 agreement, that have clawback revisions. So if a company does not create the jobs or decides to pick up and move after a couple of years, they do have to repay the taxes owed. So it is a little bit easier for communities if you approve the 12 years on the front end, and then it also saves some paperwork for the company. And obviously, you know, in 12 years, usually there could be some turnover and that helps avoid any miscommunication with reapplying for the other six years, so.
I know historically, we did that. We split that just because we wanted to be confident, ensure that the business was continued and met their obligation.
Absolutely, yeah.
So that if they didn't meet it or they didn't fulfill part of it, we had the opportunity then, at that time, to review it or deny it. And I know originally that was done. I know it's changed now, but that's historically why we did that. And I know originally that was done. I know it's changed now, but that's historically why we did that.
Yeah, and it's just fully up to the discretion of the city or the township, and, you know, we're here to support the community and the company in, in whatever ways needed, so.
Is there, the clawback clause in the twelve year, is that not in the six year?
Uh, no, I'm pretty sure that the company would have signed a one and eight agreement with the six years. This is just an extension of what was previously approved.
Not that that's in question. I just was curious if that.
Yeah, it, it should be, yes. Is it, that's a requirement the state tax commission is the one and eight agreement. We also approved like an F, we include an F David fees. Um, those are just standard documents that go into every single tax abatement, so.
So if I, if I understand it correctly, then it's kind of two ways of accomplishing the same thing. One is a six and a six, which historically was done to make sure that a company did something, or the twelve with the clawback. So either way is going to do it. The six just adds another step of coming before the committee and submitting paperwork, et cetera.
Yeah.
So that's kind of what you're saying.
Yeah, and the communities all do it differently, so, you know, I'm happy to advise if, if you guys are looking for what other communities do, it's, there's several different methods. But, yeah, this is just kind of a standard extension of, um, the agreement that was approved six years ago, so. And I should say, Rob is here and is happy to talk about Cedar Crest Dairy. If you guys have any questions.
Did he bring ice cream?
Did he?
I should have.
Now you shouldn't have, no. That wouldn't look good.
I don't have any other questions.
Any, any other questions? Counselor, you have any input there?
Um, just that I've seen it done many different ways for different durations in different communities, and, um, it's completely within your discretion, so just keep that in mind. In other words, and, and the clawback is not exactly the same as having something come up again for reconsideration in six years, in my opinion. It's different. So if you want to further analysis, I'm happy to give it to you, but.
Now, i- is, I know Rob, or there's been, he's purchased more property there that he plans to enhance or build on. So I assume we'll be seeing you come back here again for another tax abatement on that property?
Very possible.
Very possible.
If we don't, I mean, this way, I don't.
Yeah.
Because I know you bought most of that property up against the railroad in the, in the field there.
Right, we're working out with the railroad, getting ready to put an offering for that. There's a portal we can go to do that, so that, that's a long struggle, but we'd like to buy it. There's a railroad spur between the back of our property and the railroad tracks. And it, and it doesn't really go anywhere because the, the railroad sold part of it where the, uh, used to be that, that oil company on the corner, and now it's O'Reilly's and Snap. That used to be part of the spur too. They sold that, the, the railroad sold that part there, so there's no real use for that. But to try to get the railroad to give up their property is a very time-consuming and expensive ordeal. If, that would be another hundred feet we could get to the property.
Right, right.
And, uh, so we, for that reason and some other reasons, we would, we had planned in addition to put on their freezer and cooler and docks, and we're not doing that. We delayed that for a time until we could figure out if we could get some, partially, if we could get the railroad property. And, uh, so that really has nothing to do with this, this.
Right, right.
Extension of the tax abatement, but to your point, on the sixty-eight acres that I bought for that Bursel property, I, I don't have any plans for that right now, none whatsoever. Just basically wanted to kind of protect that property for the future. And it's just, I didn't want some development to come in there that would be sandwiched, you know, between.
Right.
At some point in time, maybe there's a need for an expansion over there, and I have to get a variance. Don't have any plans for it, but a lot of that is not real buildable, and, uh, the quarter is, so, you know, pretty low. So it's just, I wanted to protect and be a, a part of the community, and I wanted to be, you know, didn't have some outside investor come in there. And the price was ready for the time. They had to really sell it maybe at the end of the year, at, at, at the end of twenty twenty-three, and, uh, so it, it worked real good to get that for the benefit of all of us at some point in time.
Can we write you support with that CSX spur? Is that anything the city could help you with, or?
Well, we're, we, like I said, we, we went, we're working real hard. We've got a number. We have to go into their portal, we have to accept it, and, uh, that's where we're at right now. So I don't, I don't know what more help I can use, other than if they, just if we don't get a response from that, it's just an eyesore when you see it now. We, you know, it's just a jungle, and it looks terrible along the road there. If we bought it, the least we could do is clean it up and make it look presentable and get it to come down Chicago Drive. And there's just absolutely zero use for the railroad ever to do anything with that property. There's, there's no, there's nothing. It's a, it's a, it's a road to nowhere because they cut off or it went to the corner. So we think we have a good argument, but the railroad, they don't have to do anything, you know, so we'll see. On the tax abatement that Amanda's talking about here, we have added, we're up to a hundred and thirty-five employees now. I mean, six years ago, we had right around a hundred. So we've added and fulfilled our obligation, I feel, even more, that add more people and more business to the, uh, with your help for the tax abatement. And I hope we can, you know, consider extending it for six years. Be very helpful, yeah.
Well, Rob, you've been a great neighbor, and we love your ice cream, Taboo, so.
Well, thank you.
Any other discussions on this, uh, motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup.
Yes, thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Rob. Have a pleasant evening. Moving on to annual exemption from Public Act one five two. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution number twenty-four dash one seven eight five to utilize the exemption to remain compliant with Public Act one fifty-two, the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act of two thousand and eleven for benefit year July one, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Uh, did you want to talk to this? We talked about this at length in the personnel committee. That's why I was looking for those minutes, but I, that's why I asked that, because, but I think there is a memo on this, isn't there?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, here it is. Uh, memo prepared by Andrea. We had quite a lengthy discussion in the personnel committee on this, and we've done this before. It's, I think this is our second year, third, second? Okay. It, it's just the way we need to manage the books in terms of our, uh, of our health, uh, health insurance. If you want to speak anymore to that or not?
Oh, and I'm just a little bit, um, really appreciate the personnel committee's discussion on this and the work from, uh, Director Rabinoff. What this does, keeps us in compliance, um, as it relates to, uh, PA one fifty-two, based on public employer-provided insurance. After a healthy discussion, we, uh, the group, um, decided to move forward and put before you, um, the resolution here, keeping our insurance rates, um, at eighty-two percent to eighteen employer-to-employee contribution. This is something we'll continue to monitor, um, in the coming years that relates to health insurance costs. As of right now, we feel comfortable moving forward, uh, and requesting, uh, the resolution be passed at that eighty-two eighteen amount, but this is something we're going to monitor moving forward, and, um, unfortunately may need to, uh, change as necessary, um, but for this year, based on employment, based on the four point two five percent insurance rate, uh, we're comfortable recommending this to the city commission.
Nice work by, uh, by Andrea. Thank you. Any other discussion by the commissioners? I think we were all here last year for this one, except Jeremy, but. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to Metro Act permit. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four dash one seven eight six, issuing a Metro Act right-of-way permit for Everstream GLC Holding Company LLC as submitted.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported. Did the attorney review this? Did you?
No.
Did you have a chance to?
No.
Is this boilerplate?
Metro Act permits tend to be very much boilerplate, and as a matter of fact, if you do nothing, they're automatically approved, so that's how boilerplate they are.
Okay. Any questions for Tyler or the attorney? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item sixteen, City Hall Roof Replacement Bid Awards. There'll be two motions. I'll call for the first one.
Motion to authorize Great Lakes Building Concepts to replace the flat roof on the City Hall building for the amount of a hundred, or excuse me, for the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Do you want me to do them both at one time?
No, we got to do them separately, I assume, don't we? You're the, yep.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Uh, Mike, you really need to come up here and speak to these, huh?
Um, we did them as separate bids, the two roofing projects as separate bids, really, than one. The main reason to that was to allow, um, rougher roofing companies that just do one or the other to have a chance. So it, it kind of opened it up to, um, more companies, so, for that reason, so, and we did get a lot of response in the bits. But that's the reason of why they're two separate, because we did it in two separate bits, so.
And you and I spoke previously to this about the, quite a variance on both these bid packages between high and low, and I look you in the eye and go, are we okay with the low bidder, because?
Yeah, um, as far as the shingle roof goes, um, really, if you take the high bid out, which was a hundred and eight thousand, um, where we are at, just under fifty thousand with the bid. If you take that one away, which is a nationwide commercial roofing company that, yeah, they, I would hold no water with that one at all, so. Um, and as far as the, the company that did, um, get the bid, complete roofing and repair, local company, Georgia Township. So local people, well-known people, um, and when we checked all the references, they checked out very well, so, um, five-star ratings from everybody that I talked to, so. As far as the low bid on that one, I see no issues at all with that. And there were, with the shingle roof, there were a lot of bids that were quite close to that, um, I believe, the second, um, second bid was at fifty-two thousand, so only two thousand dollars off, so. Like I said, it's closer than it looks when you take that high one out, when you take that five-star out. As far as the flat roof goes, um, there is a little fluctuation on that, um, but the high bid on that, um, didn't quite understand the, they added some things that they didn't need, that they were not supposed to have on the bid. So rather than adding it later, they added to the bid, so that's the reason for not the one high one in the flat roof also. And same thing, um, when we, when we checked out, uh, Great Lakes Building Concepts, the flat roof, it is another local company from Georgia Township, so real close, just another set of workshops, so. And all the references checked out on that one also, so we're, we're excited, um, very much needed. Every time it rains, we have to move buckets around for the shingle roof, and the flat roof has been a, has been a nightmare, so I will be very happy to see both of these projects.
I had my, um, I was just going to say, just speaking to the differences in pricing, I had my, uh, building out in Holland, flat roof redone last year, and the price differences were significant. Low one was forty-six thousand, high one was ninety thousand, uh, forty, and then there was probably two or three that were in the fifty range, and then it jumped to sixty, and then one was way up at ninety, which is double. And the low bid, the low bid did the job, and they did fabulous job. I, I checked them out as well. I have a friend who's in construction, but, you know, some of the companies, they're like, we're really busy. If they want the business, price it high, and it's nothing wrong, it's just the way they do it.
But they're busy.
And other companies don't do that, or they, they're more hungry for the work, and there was a.
If I could speak to that too, um, a lot of, they really wanted this job. Most of the companies were real excited about getting this, and some were like, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna cut our price down just so that we can say that we roofed.
Hometown.
City of Hudsonville.
Big exposure for them, it was good, so. And, and there was some of that, where some people are going to do stuff like that, and some are not going to, especially companies that are not local. But we're lucky to have two real local companies that, um, were the low bidders, so.
When and how long?
The when, I will find out tomorrow. They're both waiting in the wings just for the final approval, but it sounded like, um, the shingle roof, they said three to four days. Once we get approval, we'll have to get the materials and everything ordered and get on the schedule, but as soon as I find out when the schedule is, I will let you all know.
Yeah, just have Tyler put in the weekly if you could, so.
Yeah.
We'll come over and help pulse the signals.
Pick up nails out of the grass.
Yeah.
Is there any potential conflict for them both, like, wanting to be out there at the same time and bumping into each other, or is this work to that?
There really isn't. Um, we are going to try to do access from the courtyard, um, where I have the antenna, the big antenna in the back, so both accesses will be there, so we'll try not to have them here at the exact same time.
Will they have a crane, I'm sure, to boom it up, yeah?
Yeah, but that's the closest where they can get their trucks and all the supplies is right up through there, so even for the flat roof.
And the dumpsters will be back there, I'm sure. They'll have dumpsters for the old shingle, yeah.
Um, the roofing company uses mobile dumpsters, so they'll be moving them around to the different parts of the building, so, yeah, where they can get them out.
So no, none of our garden refuse can end up there, guys? Any other questions for Mike? Uh, the only question, this is in the CIP, right, I think, were they?
Yep, budget four, and we are slightly under budget.
Slightly under our, um, the CIP estimate, so we're right there.
Very good. Uh, there's a motion on the floor for the first item. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup.
Yes, is there a motion for the second, uh, complete roofing repair?
Motion to authorize complete roofing and repair to replace the shingled roof at City Hall for the amount of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup.
Yes, uh, thanks, Mike. Good job. Moving item to item seventeen, city website redesign. I, I am excited about this one. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city's marketing director to hire Revise as their website design company for a total of nine thousand, nine hundred dollars in year one, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and three thousand, nine hundred dollars for years two through five, to include annual hosting, support, and maintenance.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Um. Lindsay, if you, if you want to speak to it, you can. I mean, I think this is great. I think it's time for a little bit of a refresh with the website, and I think we're all pretty excited.
Yes, I was hoping to get this to you guys a couple of months before, but with the three Civic Plus, EvoGov, and websites, I just was not, it was not sitting right, and so we went with Revise. They do Rockford, Troy, they're Michigan-based company, which I like, so they get our community, um, and Petoskey, and they had rave reviews about them. They also have technology and software built into their website that we're able to utilize down the road if we want to, um, do texting to our community members. There's water main breaks, um, and it plays very loosely with those amenities too, which I like. EvoGov is who we currently use, um, and I don't know any other municipality that uses them. Uh, I've been, I was trying to research a little bit, and they're just, they were not responsive, and customer service is, um, very important for, for us, and so, uh, we went with Revise.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, it's been a long time since I had a website created from scratch. Really, in my opinion, very reasonably priced.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, you can drop serious change on websites in about twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Is this going to give us everything we need and everything we want? I mean, when you're going custom-designed and not templating, and the hours that they put into something like that, will this be enough to take care of it in the way that we want it done correctly?
Well, this is the only website developer that does custom sites at this price. The other three that was listed is all template, um, and that was just not cutting it, obviously, with EvoGov. Um, we have different priorities. Now all communities have the same priorities, and I think that's really beneficial to create it the way that we want it, um, to be created. That also, that price includes the library. That also, that price includes the library, which I think Mary is in support, and I can speak for her, but some of the websites that I was looking at, they just do municipal sites, but they don't dabble in library or community center spaces. And I know going forward is one of our goals, that's important to us. Revise also, at year four, they do an entire redesign for us. As technology and marketing shifts and changes, they're able to look at that and partner with us to make sure that that is up to date and current. And that makes me excited with all the changes that the city is moving forward to. I'm excited that in year four, we could kinda relaunch something again. They were competitive in pricing, not only the upfront year one pricing, but also year two, three, four for the hosting and maintenance. They were the most competitive, in my opinion, with what they offered.
Now, I know we launched new process for the rentals, and like with Terrace Square, is that, is that integrated into this, or is it...
So, Terrace Square is, they have their entire website separate from us, but it will be hyperlinked onto our website, so they will play nicely. But she does her own website with the Henderson Group. So, she does all of that. But they do, Revise does offer park rental software, that we can do all of our park rentals through the website with payments and booking and all of that.
Lindsay, could you talk to the timeframe? I noticed that was one area where it seemed... Yeah, just how you're gonna manage that with content changing and directions over...
Yeah. So, that's what I've been working on with each department since January, is cleaning up everything, so the migration is pretty simple. And I was actually talking to Revise this morning, and he, he already sent me all the paperwork to get started tomorrow if this goes through, so he was very on top of it, which he knows that that was just a concern that I had with the timeline, and that was something that they differed on from the other website developers. So, I am certain that he will help us cut that time down a little bit. And just with our organization and preparation, I am also confident that that will be a little bit shorter. Something also that he said, we're trying to cut down documents and pages for departments, and so that the quote might be less, the migration process might be a little bit, it might decrease that too, so we're working hard on decreasing documents with our current website and pages. Any other questions?
Good job. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Deveray?
Yes.
Grohl?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to item 18, appointments to boards and commission. I am asking for a motion for an assignment to a new commissioner on the planning commission, of Mike Vanderland. He was... Vanderlon, sorry. He was the runner-up for the city commission this last time. He interviewed very well for us, highly educated. He's been involved in the Parks and Recs Department, securing special funding for us to our, our way signs. And I think he's somebody known to a few of us here on the commission. And I look back on the people on this commission, there's three down there that all came off the planning commission. And there's one over here that came out of the DDA. So, I think we all know that those other boards and commissions are opportunity for people to become really familiar with who we are and what we are, and whether or not they want to, at some point, come up to the commission as a, as a city commissioner. There were a couple other excellent candidates that were reviewed, with some recommendations. But knowing this candidate, and his qualifications, and his, having gone through the process with us, he was the one I most felt comfortable with recommending to the commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments to boards and commissions as listed, planning commission, Mike Vanderlon.
I'll second that.
Term ending 6/30/26.
It's been moved and supported, into the discussion?
Well, I was just gonna add, without actually mentioning to one of my sons, who knows Mike, he brought it up to me, and he said, he is a stellar guy, and he would really serve the city well.
Yeah, you know, he doesn't...
I said, interesting that you brought that up.
He's not an engineer, an architect, you know, he comes in with a different perspective, how we need to use our, our community, you know, in, in the aspects of his profession, physical therapy, and he's, he's obviously really, really smart, and I think he's somebody that we're going to really...
And a quality person. So, that made me, because I don't know him, I mean, I trust your guys' opinion, but to have one of my sons say that was like, wow, that was really cool.
It's been moved and supported. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Deveray?
Yes.
Grohl?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, and I'll notify him by phone tonight, and the other candidates, and I'll also notify the chair of the planning commission. So, I have that, I own that.
Excellent.
Last item, city manager's report, and then we'll go down the dais. Tyler?
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just 'cause it came up, you know, one thing, in PA 33 of 2008, which is the Planning Enabling Act set forth by the state of Michigan, when they're discussing planning commissions, they talk about the importance of a diverse planning commission, and public health is mentioned on there as an area, as part of a good makeup of a planning commission. So, as a local government nerd, I can appreciate the diversity, you know, of the individual in which you guys appointed, so kudos to you. All right.
Just for the record, this city manager's report is, is something that we all, he's been doing kind of informally, but there is a request to formalize it in the agenda, so this is gonna be going for a formal, semi-formal for you to have, have this spot here at the end of the, in the evening.
And I appreciate the opportunity to give you guys a little bit of a deep dive, and the members of the public as well. All right. City staff spent some time last week, along with myself, working on edits with regards to the city's board and committee appointment process. I gave a first draft to Mayor Northrup. No real timetable on this, but we're looking to hammer down that process for, for staff, based on, you know, what the, what the mayor believes the process should be, so looking forward to continue working on that. The MDNR is reviewing the final site plans for the Buttermilk Creek bathroom. This is our second resubmission. It was a small resubmission, but upon the review, we'll be able to go to bid, and we are still on track to finish those sometime this fall. I'll keep you updated on that. I met with the city assessor and the finance director, putting together a tax incentive tracking document for use to monitor and gauge the impacts both now and the future. Andrew did a great job generating that initial draft document, but as we talk about future development, I think it's important to track, tracks the tax incentives that we're giving for, for consideration. Again, we have a draft to hit my desk today, but Andrew's done a great job on that, so thank you, Andrew. Staff is working on the organizational chart, heard the feedback from the city commission workshop on March 26th. I've made some calls with some colleagues about, with the desired changes that were discussed, how we implement those from an administrative sense. I have some notes, I'll be circulating those to Attorney Wood, and we're looking for potential action on May 14th, but don't be surprised if we have a discussion on that again, just to make sure you guys are comfortable at your workshop on April 23rd. The demolition at the Old Farmers Co-op is near completion, with payment and grant requirements nearly completed to submit to the county and to pay Cutting Edge, the contractor. New survey installation that the city commission approved in February is looking to be completed in May. We had to do some electric work here. Limited disruption to city staff, equally printer programming and adding a multi-factor authenticator to some of our city business, an extra layer of IT protection is a proposal I'm working with DuPont on. Equally, our know-before trainings, cybersecurity protection, best practices should be forthcoming pretty quickly. Budget meetings are in full swing. The CIP was discussed at length with Bob and Andrew last week, I believe it was a two-hour meeting. We'll look to present that to you for discussion on April 23rd. We're working on funding mechanisms for future vehicle needs. Right now, we do not have a mechanism that we do to throw into the city's vehicle equipment fund, and looking at the CIP and public works equipment, it's something that the city commission may choose to set forth a procedure on as part of a normal budgeting practices every year. I'm working with Andrew on that, but that's something that we will be discussing, either at your workshop in May or the May workshop. Equally, staff is working on CIP for Jippee Plaza. We are property owners, we need to maintain our property, and so we need to integrate future needs of that site, with the understanding that there's considerations for that to be the future library and community center. I was recently asked to join the Grand Valley Metro Council Transportation Demand Management Working Group as part of working towards the West Michigan Express. This is the second working group I'm on, to bring this into a reality. A lot of good minds in the room, I'll keep you guys updated as, as we make some progress. I have a meeting on Friday with regards to a new hotel potential coming to Hudsonville. This is something that was discussed prior to my arrival here in February of '23. Main topic's gonna be gap funding. We need to find some additional funding, and there's limited state resources. So, we met in January, we'll meet again this week, and see what kind of opportunities are out there, and, you know, see if there's any stones in turn where we can help close that gap for the developer. Congratulations to Chief Essenberg in the Fire Department on receiving the Department of Treasury grant with regards to a $10,000 grant. It was a reimbursement grant, and with that, we had previously purchased a thermal imaging camera. So, again, that's $10,000 to the general fund that otherwise would not be realized. I'm working with Mary Cook, Library Directory, on library policy updates and a refresh, programs, internet use, board bylaws, among other items. Once we feel we're comfortable with the draft, we'll run it by the city attorney and bring to the library advisory board, and then this body for approval. This will be something that we're working on, look for things in the next few months. Terrace Square is a bridal expo, just a reminder, April 20th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Terry's done a great job on this. It's a great event, I attended last year, prior to me getting married, and it's really cool to see all the local vendors pack Terrace Square and the participation from the public in that. So, mark it down, April 20th, 9 to 1. The purchase agreement between the DDA and the Moxie Development Group with regards to Prospect Flats on the corner of Prospect Street and 32nd Ave was signed, sealed, and delivered in early March. We're now working on establishing a commercial rehab district, which, as of right now, will be on your agenda for the April 23rd special meeting. There's public hearings and posting requirements, and we want to get this, the district established before we move forward. Timelines matter here, so we're just getting ahead here. Terrace Station, I have a meeting on Friday with Chris Veneklausen and his team, along with our team and Kirk Perschbacher of Fishback, who's also a member of the DDA, discuss the timelines, working with the county's brownfield redevelopment authority as it relates to brownfield TIF capture for residential, residential dwellings. This is new legislation, it will be the first time the county has gone through that, so we will be the guinea pig. It's gonna be a long meeting, there's a lot of materials needed, you know, for submission on the applicant's end. That meeting is on Friday. Once that meeting takes place, I'll go into part two, is I'm gonna be providing the city attorney with purchase agreements, all materials corresponding to Terrace Station. The bond is up on June 15th. I've met with Andrew about potential options for that, but that is quickly approaching. The planning commission will have a formal review of the Terrace Station project on May 1st. This is the culminating approval for the planning commission to decide if the project moves forward. Once the planning commission is approved per the purchase agreement, we will need to secure the financial incentives and work as quickly as possible through that. Again, the county has not worked on this before. So, after my discussion with Jessica, we may have an action item for you on your April 23rd meeting. Delays over the last couple weeks with regards to members of his team being out of the office, we have the meeting on Friday, so I'll have an update for you after that. I was informed that the Michigan Strategic Fund, which is looking to approve the $1.6 million grant to Terrace Station, that meeting has not taken place, as the governor's office has moved that funding mechanism to the RAP 3.0 project, and now that process has delayed as well. I don't have a date from Chris on that. I do have a call-in to the MEDC, looking for when they have a date that was supposed to take place on early March, but again, through their restructuring of the funds, because there are less funds, that meeting did not take place.
Maybe Brad could help us on that. Though that, May 1st, that's a, that's a special planning commission then?
Yes. Yep, informal review of that site and the Prospect Flat Sites. This is, it's a big meeting, if you're interested in learning more about the project in depth, I encourage anyone to attend, but hopefully we have a good result, or the necessary result at the end of that. So, I'll be working with Jessica, we had a good conversation today, working with Chris, I have that meeting on Friday, and I'll have a substantial update for you at your April 23rd. Be prepared for an action item, I'll work with the mayor and the city attorney on what direction we go through there. And then finally, the county board approved language with regards to a 10-year renewal on an existing road millage that will be able for voters to approve or not approve at the August election. I'll be working with the county on a list of projects and where the city of Hudsonville fits in on that, but road funding is a big deal, there's not enough of it, so the voters will have an opportunity to potentially renew that millage at the county level. If there's any questions, comments, concerns, I can take those at this time.
You know what my question's gonna be?
Yeah.
I heard you, reading between the lines on these grants, that we're gonna see a request for delay again in funding.
So...
Or, or purchase agreement approval.
And you're, and with regards to Terrace Station?
Yes.
So, you know, I'm scratching my head, Commissioner, on what my office and what the city can do to move this faster. It is a complex project, it takes time, we're making progress. The planning commission having approval, that, the public hearing and subsequent approval on May 1st is arguably the largest component of this to have approved. Now, as far as the commercial rehab is concerned, there, the district's already approved. It's going through, passing the revol, the resolution, having the public hearing, that's where we approve that. The city controls the means there, we're, I believe, I believe it's to be in good shape. As far as the county brownfield is concerned, because the city does not have its own brownfield redevelopment authority, we rely on the county, this is something we may look to adjust and form a local authority in the future. We're not there yet, but the timing of the county board and their documents, I don't have the timeline update on that.
But is that, that's a new funding process, and it just feels like to me that Chris is saying, oh, we found something new, now we're gonna have to wait for this approval. And that's fine, but then he needs to pay the interest.
So, that's what, one of the aspects with the city attorney that I'll be working on to, to, you know, see what we can do, that was not an original incentive, that's been discussed, going back to when the RFI was put forth on December 31st of '22, and approved in June of 20, 21, and then June of '22. So, that will be a discussion, because that is an extra layer on that. As far as where we're at with the interest payments for the property, that will be a discussion that I have with the city attorney, and it's something that I look forward to putting forth of Mr. Veneklausen for his support based on the project timeline. With that being said, and we, we've discussed this at length, and I appreciate this, this body's, you know, patience with this. I do believe, outside of a couple delays where we've really had to hammer things out, the latest one being RoadWith and Public Utilities, and looking at the maintenance of that site in the future. It's a public road, Public Utilities, the placement of them now is important for the community 10, 20, 30, 50 years from now. So, with that, things, I won't call them delays, they have taken time, but there's a point within this that we have to put this in front and act on it. And, you know, in talking with Jessica, that's something that we look to be aggressive with and put forth before you guys, and, and work with him. Projects like this do take time, it's a $32 million project. Economic development is not easy, and it is often timely. We are making progress, and I know I've said that before, but I'll hit home that, you know, getting to the planning commission, public hearing, an opportunity for the planning commission to approve, in my mind, is the single biggest hurdle that the project faces, and I'm very optimistic.
We've been doing it a year and a half already. They could've expedited this to the planning commission before now.
Based on the requirements that the planning commission needs as part of their, part of their review, we just weren't there. I mean...
We, we can't relive the past, Larry. We're, we have to think about the future. So the, the funding mechanism has changed at the state. Brad, I got to look at you. If you can give us some clarity on that, how we can expedite that, because we're sitting on a huge piece of property and we're paying a big monthly bill on it for Veneklausen and then this, this is, if this holds us up, it's, it's hurting the city. It's hurting the developer. If you can give, shed any light into that or, or help us understand why did they change the funding mechanism at the 11th hour on us? I don't... So if, if you could, if you and Taylor, Tyler could connect, because this is just a mystery.
With that being said, I do believe that that funding will come in prior to the, to June 15th. The last day where they said they will review and entertain projects that did not hit the criteria or were not initially included as part of the RAP process was, I believe, the first week of June. I was hoping to hear something by now and give you guys a speck of good news and it just didn't happen. But I don't have a date on that. I have a meeting, it will be a very large meeting, informative meeting on Friday. I will have a, you know, a concrete update and as I work with the city attorney, we'll look at minimum, provide an update and discuss at April, on your April 23rd meeting or potential action as well.
Okay, if you have any updates, just put them in the weekly, so at least we're...
Yeah.
We're dialed in there. Any other questions on his comments tonight? Before I forget, I sent a couple emails out. I need somebody to cover for the students coming up next, Tuesday? So if there's somebody who wants to cover for me, I have a, I have a Grand Rapids Chamber event that I'm locked into, so, sorry. So what's it, I think at 2, 2 o'clock is it? 3 o'clock? So if there's a commissioner up here, please, or two of you want to cover that, because there'll be, I think, 15 to 20 students here that need to get some face time with some of the city leadership. And then also, I sent a note out today referencing Walker, mayor called me, talked to me at length. You know, we still have a lot of goodwill from the Terrace Square Community Excellence Award and Mayor Walker, Mayor Gary Carey really would like to use that as a template for a larger project he would like to do in Walker and wants to come in here and get a good tour with his DDA. So that's on your calendars. It'd be nice if we had some representation, certainly you, Jack, being on the DDA, it'd be nice to have you there.
He'd be out of town.
He'd be out of town. If we could get somebody, at least a couple of us there, I think it'd be good and healthy for us to make that appearance at that, at the Walker DDA. I know you reserved the Terrace Square, but it's an opportunity for us to showcase that facility and they, they really want to use that as a template for something in Walker. What do you got?
I'm excited to see the construction process starting on Harvey Street and it would be fun and I don't know if this is possible. It'd be fun to see that come to conclusion and then the Village Green construction, see the energy kind of carry right into that. So I just wanted to throw that out there and say what a cool thing that would be if we could make the stars align, but I know there's a lot to it. I'm just curious and I'm watching.
Yeah, on that note, since you brought it up, Commissioner, I got with the Planning and Zoning Department last week after our, after our workshop and we're going to assemble the Knights at the Round Table and put together an action, an action plan as it relates to items in this strategic plan. So that conversation, and I appreciate you bringing it up, Commissioner, at the workshop, we're going to hit the ground running, work with finance. Andrew, find us the money. But that's, you guys made it pretty clear with the priority with that line, so look forward to building on that momentum.
Dave?
Just excited for the, I think there's two new businesses that moved in the now city's property that are opening soon, so that's...
Who are they?
I'm going to blink on the name, Tyler, but...
One is really cool.
Playmakers.
Playmakers is a sports memorabilia and card shop and then I, I don't know the name of the other one, but they're...
It's my brother.
Well, it's just fun to have new businesses in that and that was an empty building previous, so even just from the cool economic development of that changing hands garnered attention from the community, so good work putting that in play, Andrew and Tyler, so thank you.
Yeah, I'm just really looking forward to the next planning commission meeting and seeing some actual, hopefully, final plans, something that's been a little bit more fleshed out from what we've seen previously. And it'll be really nice to get those developments wrapped up and put a bow on that, so looking forward to that.
I don't think we'll get the bow on it quite yet, but we're, we're getting there.
Close, close.
Counselor? Larry?
No other than thank you for what you're doing and the staff's doing and appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Just, you know, living here my whole life and growing up as a kid with the co-op property, it's kind of bittersweet because as a kid, I used to not break into the buildings, but sneak, sneak into them and explore.
Statue of limitations.
So, you know, it, that was, seriously, that was a big part of my childhood. It was fun, so it's kind of, you know, exciting to see the future, but also, you know, bittersweet, like I said, that was a big part of the city of Hudsonville for a long, long time, so that's all I got.
How do you follow that up?
Did you break into the building?
Going from breaking it, breaking in the co-op to city commission?
I said sneak.
That's all right, I get it.
You climbed a lot, water tower maybe once?
No, no, what I would like to say for Lindsey, just feeling bad for that situation, my, with the, I don't know what you call it, theft of, of the monies. My brother was involved in a real estate deal a couple of years ago and it was similar thing, very sophisticated. And they got into a deal and everything looked official and they ended up paying monies that were, were gone in less than 24 hours. They were able to recoup some of it, but a lot of it was gone, but it's just, we live in a world that unfortunately crimes can now be committed just with a computer rather than walking into a bank with a gun. And, you know, I feel bad for you guys. I, I hope that we can somehow, you know, figure out a, I guess, the best ending to that, that, that we can. You did nothing wrong, right? It was a tough situation and it could happen to anybody and we just feel bad for you, so... Yeah, goodbye.
Andrew?
I just want to thank you for your moment of silence that...
Thank me for what?
For your moment of silence.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I mean, it, you never know who it's going to impact.
Sometimes it just hits home.
Yeah, so that was really great. It's good to, for people to know.
We have a finance committee meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday.
At 4.
4?
At 4.
4 o'clock. That's, that's, who is it? Larry and... Tobin. Jill, shaking your head, last opportunity for anybody in the audience. Hearing done, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned, thank you.